That's okay.
All right, we'll call the Crow Wing County Committee of the whole meeting for June 17th, 2025 to order. And with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Jessen.
Thank you. I think, let me just make sure I've got the. Okay. Well, first of all, thank you for having us today here to present. Really appreciate it. We had the legislative special session adjourned just last Tuesday morning, technically. I think it was a little bit shy of 2:00 AM, if I'm recalling correctly, which was technically five hours ahead of schedule, according to their prior agreement. I did just want to kind of start off by acknowledging that, obviously, the events of this past weekend are really difficult. And one thing I just wanted to say about Speaker Hortman, who I did work for a little bit, and worked with for a little bit when I worked at the House of Representatives, is that she really valued public service. And I think that people might look to different things that she did during, you know, certain legislative sessions. But I also think this year, during the power sharing agreement, she essentially put together an agreement where each of her chairs retained their power and each of the, she retained as much staff as she could. And the person that, like, lost power in that agreement was her. Speaker Damuth was speaker and is going to remain a speaker for a remainder of two years. So I do think that that just kind of speaks to her character as a public servant. So I just wanted to say that. But I did come here to talk about the 2025 session. We brought a lot of our team today, too. And so I am Nathan Jessen, first of all. I started at MICA in January. The, my second day was the first day of legislative session this year. And it's our job as MICA, and we'll see if I can make this slide work or not. Well, we can always just. There we go. Okay. So I, okay. And I can just, we can verbalize that if it doesn't work. So, so it's basically our job to connect counties in the Capitol, right? You know, we're advocates ourselves, and we'll meet with legislators on a regular basis and attend committee hearings. But we're at our most effective when we bring your stories or, from Crow Wing County, or connect, whether it's commissioners or staff directly to legislators, that's generally when we're going to be our most effective. And we do, we produce a lot of work kind of throughout the session, whether it's, you know, we send out weekly legislative update with reports out from each committee. We do an end of session report, which should be coming out probably this Thursday afternoon, which will kind of look at, here are all the bills that affect counties, here's kind of what the impact is. We're not, we don't need to describe the whole bill to you, but we can just tell you what it means for counties specifically. We have our annual forum. Last year, it was in Scott County. This upcoming year, I believe it's in Stearns County, probably in January. And then we also create policy priorities. Well, we don't create them. The commissioners and staff give us direction on what they want to prioritize at the Capitol. Part of our work that we also try to do is be a little bit more analytical in our approach, kind of look at some of the numbers, dive a little bit more deeply than some others do, and try to make sure we really quantify the impact and show, here's what it might mean on an individual basis across our different member counties. So we're, we have 17 counties all in all in the metro and greater Minnesota. And here's our personnel at the Capitol. We've got four of the five here today, and they'll all be coming up and introducing themselves. So we can go to the next slide. No worries. Yeah. So I think a lot of the work that we do, I try to provide property tax comparisons between different counties, look at the levy data, and then break down any economic forecasts that come out. There's two of those a year. I would say one, there's always, the advantage that the Association of Minnesota Counties has is that they're an organization that speaks for all 87. An advantage we have is that being smaller, we can be a little bit more quick and responsive sometimes, and that we also have members of two county commissioners from each of our counties serve on our board. And we, our staff, staff groups provide opportunities for counties to talk to one another of similar sizes and kind of go through different issues that may be coming up for them in their county and see if they're happening elsewhere. So we can go to the next slide. So the beginning of session was, I mean, I say this like every two years, almost it seems like, but it was really unprecedented. We had a tie in the House, or 67-66 at the very beginning of the year, and eventually became a tie after a special election, 67-67. At the beginning of the session, the Senate was tied at 33-33, and then eventually became a 34-33 DFL majority. The other thing that made it really difficult was there was this out biennium deficit. The November forecast projected a $5 billion deficit in the out biennium, not the current biennium that we normally spend for, but the out biennium. In February, that number increased to 6 billion. Now, that is counting inflation, which in 2023, the legislature said, hey, we're going to start counting inflation. If you don't count inflation, that number's lower, but it's still in the billions. There was, and this kind of got under discussed at times, a current biennium surplus. So the legislature didn't have to make cuts. It could have waited. Basically, the tone was set when the governor released his budget, that there were going to be significant cuts in some, but not all areas, right? And we saw that most pronounced with the governor's budget, with the county cost shifts in the HHS area, and also with aid cuts. You know, we'll talk a little bit more about this later, but the governor proposed cutting aquatic invasive species aid, and also later proposed repealing the local government cannabis aid, and later proposed a cut in payment in lieu of taxes as well. So basically, what this meant was that we end up playing defense on all fronts, essentially. Like, each lobbyist here was working to protect a lot of things that counties may currently receive. Now, were we trying to play offense, too, and move the ball forward? Yes, absolutely. And we did that in some areas pretty well. And I think in HHS, there's, there's some success stories there especially. But it is, it was a real challenge, because essentially, the mindset was set at the beginning of session, like, the focus was on cuts and cost shifts, rather than thinking about slower management of, and kind of more cautious slash conservative approach of not trying to do too much too soon, when we're not sure of what the fiscal picture will look like in 2027. So we can go to the next slide. I wanted to talk a little bit about the tax bill in particular. So, as I mentioned, the governor proposed cuts to aquatic invasive species aid, proposed repeal of cannabis aid, and the reduction of PILT, a one-third reduction in PILT. It was a very difficult, the tax chairs themselves had a really difficult time negotiating these bills, because neither the House nor the Senate actually passed tax bills off the floor this year, which is very unusual. There was the dynamic of the House having to come to an agreement, as with every committee, between the DFL and GOP. They did do that, and they moved a bill, but they threw tax committee in ways and means, but not off the floor, essentially because everything was happening so late that they started running up against deadlines. So I think that some of the highlights, we've got the repeal of the local government cannabis aid. So in 2023, when the legislature legalized cannabis, they said, okay, we're going to set aside 20% of the revenue that comes from the gross receipts tax on cannabis for cities and counties. And it'll be split, half, half of that 20% will go to cities, half of that 20% will go to counties. And the county distribution was going to be based on essentially the number of cannabis retailers in each jurisdiction, along with a component that made sure that every county received at least some of this cannabis revenue. Now, the governor proposed repealing it. It is one of the few aids that was in law, that was projected to grow over time, things like county program aid, or payment in lieu of taxes, or other, like, repairing protection aid, aquatic invasive species aid. Those are always a static number. This one was projected to grow over time, which is why the governor proposed to cut it and repeal it, I guess I should say. And that's something that was difficult to fight against. First, because counties hadn't gotten any of this money yet, right? It was difficult to make the cost shift argument when we hadn't started receiving funds. Technically, there was a $2,100 payment that each county got back in September, but that's obviously pretty negligible. The House and Senate both also proposed repealing this, and it did get repealed in the final bill. Aquatic invasive species aid, this is a $10 million aid, or, under current law, for, dedicated specifically to fighting aquatic invasive species aid, whereas the cannabis aid was kind of general purpose revenue. You could use it for what you saw best fit. What ended up happening, the governor proposed cutting it in half, starting with aids payable in 2026. The final agreement, cut it in half, starting with aids payable in 2027. Now, this is, I would say, especially significant to Crow Wing County. Crow Wing County gets, so we've got the number up there, so that's a $236,096 cut to Crow Wing. Crow Wing is also just one of the larger recipients of the aid in particular. Per capita, it's $6.82 in Crow Wing, and as Crow Wing, 4.7% of the total AIS aid goes to Crow Wing County. On the bright side, there were no cuts to county program aid. In the final agreement, the Senate had proposed cutting county program aid by $20 million. Crow Wing County gets $46 per capita in county program aid. It's about 1% of the total county program aid goes to Crow Wing County. That was something that was very difficult at times. There were a lot of aid cuts that the Senate was proposing, essentially to pay for other spending or tax cuts that they were pursuing, usually smaller dollar type of proposals. And so, but we were able to protect CPA. We were also able to protect payment in lieu of taxes, which is something the governor proposed, cutting by one-third. Crow Wing County is a pretty large recipient of payment in lieu of taxes as well. That's $12.87 per capita, about 2% of all PILT goes to Crow Wing County, which is 13th highest in the state. I should have said at the top, I apologize. If you ever have questions, just feel free to interrupt me anytime. Or otherwise, I'll just keep going.
I have a question. So when you say, when you say per capita, are you saying, like, our total population? Is that what you're saying, the number, or what do you?
Yeah. So per capita, I'm saying the amount that Crow Wing County receives divided by the number of people in Crow Wing County. Because you can't compare Crow Wing County to, like, you know, Hennepin County, right? So it's just kind of a way of figuring out, well, per person, how much aid are you getting, right?
Okay, makes sense. And then when you say county program aid and PILT is combined together to make this 3.169 million?
Sorry, no. That 3.169 million dollar number is county program aid only. PILT is a separate payment. We don't have projected PILT data out that far yet. I don't have it, the, the most recent payment to Crow Wing right in front of me, but I can get that number to you pretty easily.
That number is 800 and some thousand.
Okay, 800 and some thousand? Okay, got it.
Sorry.
No, no, thank you. That's great. I need all the help I can get, you know?
He's a number.
That's why Nate and I really like each other. We're number people. We're right here.
Yeah, 2024 was 845,000.
I was close, wasn't I?
You were close.
That's, that's pretty good. I, see, I wasn't going to guess, because then I could have been pretty far off, you know?
I didn't have it down to the penny, but I knew it was over 800,000. I'll do better next time. Sorry about that.
We all have something to strive for. But yeah, so in this, so the 2026 totals go, Crow Wing County is projected to go down a little bit. That's just kind of, every year, the formula adjusts based on where it deems the needs are. Needs are based on things like your adjusted net tax capacity per capita, the number of SNAP benefits, number of households receiving SNAP benefits, and your age-adjusted population, which factors in how many people do you have that are 65-plus in your county.
Nate, have you ever tried to go through that actual CPA formula?
Oh, oh, yeah. I've got it here on spreadsheet.
I, I tried to do the LGA formula, and I, it was, it was overwhelming.
So I think, so I used to work at the League of Minnesota Cities.
I know that.
And I would say that the CPA formula is actually quite a bit simpler than the LGA formula. So I do really appreciate that about county program aid. But just a few other things on the tax bill. Their final target was $118 million, and this biennium, $190 million in the out biennium. So for the taxes, which is kind of unique in some ways, that's a combination of tax increases and spending cuts, is basically what that 118 and 190 number was, right? So the AIS cut, which is 10 million, or $5 million a year, starting in AIDS payable 2027, so it's not going to affect your budget next year, but it will the year after that. That essentially accounted for 10 million of that 190. Two of the other really big pieces, these aren't really super significant to counties, but are the increase in the cannabis tax. That increased from 10% to 15%.
Just for clarification, that's the cannabis tax that goes to the state, not, not the cannabis aid that comes to the county.
Right. Well, I mean, under the new law, none of that money will come to the county.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
Just wanted to, just to clarify that, yes, there was an increase in the cannabis tax. None of that was scheduled to come to the counties. The part that was going to come to the counties from the cannabis aid, that is no longer coming to the counties.
Yep.
Well, it was something they really pushed hard when they were pushing that law in there, that they were going to be sharing that with the counties, with the cities, and then to have them pull it out at the last minute was a little bit.
Yeah, that was, that was a really big push we made in 2023. It was really difficult to get, frankly, any changes to the cannabis bill in 2023. It was kind of a big win that we got that. And as soon as there is a deficit, you know, they, they took it away immediately, not even a current biennium deficit, which I always harp on, and then legislators look at me like, well, but, what? So that, that is something that we unfortunately lost out on, but it was tough. That was in all three bills. Another big, I should say, sales tax still does apply to cannabis. So if you're talking about the total tax on cannabis, it's going to be that 15% plus your 6.875% state sales tax, and then any local sales taxes. So I believe Crow Wing County has a half percent on transportation sales taxes. So it's, it's not much, but any purchase of cannabis that will be paying that half cent, at least. So that's, it's not a lot, but it is something. Another big thing, just for getting to those numbers, those target numbers that they did, was repealing the electricity sales tax exemption on data centers. There's been a lot of conversations about data centers. The data center sales tax exemption is on hardware, software, and electricity. So the new law maintains their hardware and software sales tax exemptions, and repeals the sales tax exemption on electricity. And, you know, the argument was, you know, most people do pay sales tax on electricity. That was another big chunk of their target. A few things that didn't go in. We've got on here, no action on the construction materials sales tax refund. You all may have some familiarity with this. Basically, when local governments, because we separately contract, contract labor and materials, though there is something in law that technically says local governments don't have to pay sales tax, because for a lot of different reasons, including like liability and risk reasons, you've got separately big materials and labor, the contractors end up purchasing the materials, they don't have a sales tax exemption. We did, in 2023, we also pushed this on trying to make sure that we can actually realize that sales tax exemption, which would be a significant ongoing savings to local governments and counties in particular. That bill was heard this year in the House, and there were lots of special exemptions brought forward by individual local governments, be they counties, cities, or school districts, saying like, okay, we're going to ask for this, but just for our one project for this one and a half year window, or what have you. The total price tag on the refund as a whole is over $60 million a year, which is actually down from what it was when it was estimated in 2023 at over $80 million a year. And it was just really difficult to get any type of momentum for, when you've got the legislature tasked with raising almost $200 million in revenue, or cutting that amount in spending, to then spend that much money on a provision that large. It's something that everybody agrees on. Republicans, Democrats say, hey, we shouldn't be taxing this. It's really difficult to make it anybody's top priority, is what I would say, just from a legislative perspective. So that ended up getting heard in the House, but not included in the House bill, did not move forward. And also, almost essentially no individual special exemptions went into law either. So for those cities, counties, or school districts that may have said, hey, whether it's our judicial center corrections facility, we're asking for a sales tax exemption, those did not become law this year, also due to budget constraints, if you were to talk to the tax chairs. One last thing on this, this has kind of been an ongoing issue, is the, the general local sales tax authorization discussion on allowing cities and counties to go straight to the voters, to ask them to approve or disapprove a sales tax to fund a certain project. Under current law, you have to go to the legislature first. This creates a lot of issues, because tax bills are pretty rare. They only happen about once every other year. And then when you go to the legislature and they say no, or they change your proposal, it's really difficult to know, well, why did that happen? The legislature is kind of a black box in this regard. That proposal did move forward in the Senate. The House had a different proposal, which extended the local sales tax moratorium by a year that's been in place for two years, that say, locals can't come to us to ask for these anymore, and created a task force of legislators, the House built it, to say, like, let's come up with a new plan. And basically, none of that moved forward this year. So the House didn't get what they wanted, which was extending the moratorium, the Senate didn't get what they wanted, which was saying, let's set up this new process of the, local governments don't have to come to the legislature. My only other note on that is Senator Rest has said that while her bill didn't move forward, she still plans to abide by the parameters that she set out in her bill for what types of projects that she would approve moving forward or not.
Nathan, so that moratorium, when does that moratorium end? Was that moratorium had a set date on it?
Yeah. So the moratorium is technically already expired. Funny enough, it did expire June 1st, 2025. So during their special, it would have been, like, outside the moratorium. But the, the moratorium is expired right now.
So it's, you still have to go to the legislature if a city wants to do it, then?
Yeah. So if a city or county wants to pursue a local sales tax to bring to their voters, and have the voters decide whether or not a project moves forward with an increased sales tax, that still has to come to the legislature first. And then, depending on the timing, then you'd have to go to your voters, likely during an even numbered year in November.
Dead in the water.
Sorry, what?
Dead in the water at this time. Any city looking at moving forward to try and get it in front of a legislature in any expedient?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's not going to happen in an expedient way. That, that's exactly right. Local governments, starting next year, I would assume you will see, certainly a lot of cities bring forward local sales tax proposals to the legislature, to see if they can get approval to bring them to their voters. I haven't talked to counties that are, have clearly identified that yet, but that's something that could happen for some counties as well. I would say that there's a lot more of these at the city level than the county level. But, you know, Stearns County, Winona County, Jackson County, all pursued local sales taxes on the ballot in 2024. Most of those were approved, but not all of them. So, yeah. Any other questions on the tax portions? Okay. Yes.
So I just have a, first of all, I like the presentation so far, because Nathan, your voice carries, and usually I can't hear anything, you know? And so I'm hearing it very well, so thank you for that.
I, nobody's ever told me I'm, I'm too quiet.
No. So that's, so that's a good thing. I like it, because Jamie's like. Anyway, okay. So, a couple of questions. And this is, I'm not trying to be mean or anything on this one, but, you know, obviously, we're paying, Crow Wing County's citizens are paying, we're paying for a membership and association of Minnesota counties, and we're paying for a membership in your organization, which we don't have to do. But I think what I've seen over the years, I see the value, and I think we see the value. Otherwise, we wouldn't keep you doing it. But I guess my question is, is when the board of, that you have, identifies something that's affecting counties, and you want the legislature to fix that, can you point to a success story where you've lobbied the legislature, and your organization has came up with a success that has been helpful to Crow Wing County and other counties? Does that make a?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think we have lots of those stories this year. And taxes, we were kind of more playing defense, frankly. I, I do think protecting CPA and PILT, those were two priorities that we had, and we saw no cuts to those. I'm going to talk a little bit later about some other issues, some general government issues, after everybody else comes through. But like, one really big thing this year that we led on was, so, and Amber and I talked about this some during legislative session, was this idea of a capital replacement account. And this is kind of for all counties broadly. You know, we work on the statewide issues that affect counties, is there was a bill that previously had been proposed by the House DFL bonding chair, Representative Fu Li, and Senator Sandy Pappas in the Senate, around requiring local governments to essentially have the money to replace a building before they were able to go to the state, or receive state bonding dollars. As you can imagine, that creates lots of issues. You know, first of all, you've got this separate account that just has to sit there, and the money's going to sit there for, I mean, it would be decades, frankly, and requires you to have the revenue to pay for a project before you come to the legislature to ask for money to, to help pay for that project. Now, we understand why, like, local matches exist and things like that, and the legislature's a big fan of those, and they, they have value. But we particularly saw, like, this capital replacement account idea as something that was a really bad deal for cities and counties. We initially were working with the Senate author on, well, okay, let's try to make sure this, there's some exemptions if you have a five-year capital improvement plan. The bill only had 10 years, unfortunately, speaking, like, almost nobody has a 10-year capital improvement plan. And work other exemptions into law based on, like, your tax capacity. We also worked with Representative Tabke, who authored the bill this year, and he was more willing to listen to our kind of, like, broader concerns with that bill. So rather than create a capital replacement account plan, and create a, or sorry, rather than create, we worked with them to change the language, so that rather than there's, there being a capital replacement account, where that money would have to sit, and you would have to have that money all ready to pay for the replacement before you came to the legislature, which is, again, in my opinion, counterintuitive. He, the, the bill that moved forward out of the Capital Investment Committee, though, did not end up becoming law, but the bill that moved forward in the House basically said, you have to have a maintenance and preservation plan. So not a replacement account, where you need to put all this money in to replace the building as soon as, you know, its useful life is ended, but instead make sure that, have it boxed, that each local government checks that says, like, okay, you've got to have a plan, rather than an account, just to say, like, we have a plan to maintain and preserve this building. So that's like, an example, but I think we have lots of others, too.
You were helpful in stopping this, which could have had a negative effect on counties. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, I, I think that, and this is just part of the way that the, the world works at the Capitol, is that sometimes it's not just enough to say no. We say no all the time, right? And, like, we said no on county program aid and PILT. But sometimes you have to give the legislature another path, where they feel like, okay, like, you have this idea, and you have all these grand plans, but like, there's a million reasons why this doesn't work. What if we did something else instead? And we steer them in a different direction, right? So that wasn't like, it wasn't like we laid down the hammer or anything. That's not the way that it works. The legislators are the ones with the power, right? But that was an example of, like, we helped steer in a direction that, like, frankly, makes sense. You know, it makes sense for, for local governments to have maintenance and preservation plans. They can check a box. Legislators can follow up and ask follow-up questions. But that's like, an example of an area where we played that role.
So one other thing, so I guess, I don't know, maybe this is a question for Deb. Not that I think we have any specific things that were, I think back several years ago, when we wanted to combine the auditor and treasurer, and we needed somebody to help us in the legislature. Would that be something that you would do if we had something specific to Crow Wing County, that you would, your organization would work on our behalf on that? Or who would we use? Them, or AMC, or what would we do?
Probably a combination of both AMC and MICA in many of those types of situations. At the time that we did the combination of the offices, we weren't members of MICA yet at that point in time. At the time that we did the combination of the offices, we weren't members of MICA yet at that point in time. Um, we did get some support from AMC in that process. A lot of it depends on what the, the topic is. You know, many counties have their own lobbying arm or have their own government affairs division that is dealing with exactly that, if there are a lot of things that they are hoping to accomplish at the legislature. But in many cases, if there is something that we do feel strongly about that is specific to the county, we can work with MICA, we can work with AMC to get support in many of those things. Most of the focus of both of these organizations are on statewide issues that are going to impact many counties or all counties in most cases. The true value of MICA in our case comes from a lot of the analysis and the analytical data and some of the things that Nathan and his staff are doing with regard to providing that like-minded comparison data. If you look at the 17 members who are part of MICA, they're very much our contemporaries across the state as it pertains to population, budget size, many of the same types of issues that we are facing. So it's a better maybe cross-section of the information that we're working with versus looking, trying to take statewide data and parse it down to something that is comparable. This does a lot of that work for us before that even gets to that point and gives us really good lenses to look at.
But you wouldn't help us if we had a specific issue with that or is it not?
So I, I mean, we're not going to lobby on specific issues, but if you have questions about, well, how would it work to like pursue something like this, you know, we're always at your disposal. The other thing I would add, and I think, uh, County Administrator Debbie actually did a great job kind of describing the value there is that sometimes AMC and MICA are, we're never going to be in opposition to one another, you know? But there are going to be times where we prioritize things a little bit differently, just based on like it was being discussed, the, the difference, AMC has to represent a lot of counties, including, you know, counties that are maybe 5,000 or 6,000 people, right? And we sometimes will prioritize different things than AMC will, right? That, but we're not going to be like working in opposition to them, you know? We work with them, but.
So I'm trying to build a bridge, so that's what I'm looking for some money to build.
Not the arm for that purpose, just so that we're clear on that.
The physical bridge.
Oh, okay.
No, it is a bridge.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure at first.
I'm looking for some money for a bridge.
Yeah.
So, you know, one of the things that you bring up, and I think it's really important is, you know, other counties have, the, the other bigger counties actually have their own IGR staff almost, pretty much lobby. We are the lobbyists for this county and we should be down there lobbying for things for this county with those legislatures and not expecting you or AMC or somebody else to be doing that. It should be up to us. I know when I attend a lot of these meetings and I go down there, I'm amazed at how many county commissioners are there from one county and they're out there lobbying for their own things for that county. And I think that's very important and that's something I think we should really, uh, look at being involved in. If we want to lobby for what we want in Crowing County, we should be down there lobbying for Crowing County.
Yeah, yeah, the one thing I would add to that is like sometimes we'll coordinate with AMC during like their days on the Hill or something like that. One of those happened, uh, this May and it actually happened to be the same day that the budget targets were released. I think that's right. Um, and so that was actually a really great day for county commissioners to be there. And we're always going to be advocates for counties at the lobbyist level. But like you said, I think the, I, the most effective we are is when we can put county commissioners in front of their members, right? Or at least relay the stories that we get from those county commissioners to make it more personal to the members, right? And like, here's what it means on the ground back in your district, right? Rather than just kind of staying at the high level, so, yeah.
Well, I will say Commissioner Lubkey, you are right. It is important for commissioners to go down there, but it is not unheard of for counties to hire lobbyists. Hennepin County have lobbyists.
Right, right, yeah.
They hire lobbyists because lobbyists are a critical part of the legislature and they do get things done. I, I will say, so, but I'm not, I, I don't think that we, we don't need anybody now, but I'm just saying in the future, I guess I was just kind of curious if, if we were looking for somebody that, but I see what your position is, so.
Thanks, Nathan.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for the questions. This is a very helpful conversation to have, so really appreciate that. Um, I think I'm going to turn it over to Amber for a little bit here, so.
Great.
Move to the next slide.
Advance the slide. So I'm Amber Backus with the firm of United Strategies. This is my first term representing, uh, MICA at the legislature on transportation issues. I have a lot of seniority on Nathan. I was hired four months before he was, so bragging rights. But, um, no, I've been around the Capitol way too long. I think this was my 30th legislative session and I focused on transportation a lot over the years that I've been there. And it's been a real pleasure, uh, to represent you guys at the Capitol. And again, I think my success, um, for MICA this session can be attributed to county commissioners and county engineers weighing in and being there at hearings and contacting their legislators. So thank you for all that support. Um, so we talked a little bit about the omnibus transportation bill where most of the provisions we carry about were contained. There weren't really any individual transportation bills that moved this legislative session. Um, so during the regular session, the House and the Senate transportation committees were successful in assembling their omnibus bills, but they had very different targets. The House, um, didn't have to make any cuts to general fund. They had a zero target, whereas the Senate had a $115 million target. When it came time for the global agreement on transportation, they ended up following the Senate's lead, uh, which surprised everybody. So they had a $113 million general fund target and that's very significant. Transportation is about 0.6% of general fund spending from the state, but they had to bear 11% of the cuts that were assigned to helping reconcile the general fund deficit. Um, so when you look at the transportation budget, a lot of the revenues come, are dedicated revenues, gas tax, TAB fees, motor vehicle sales tax, which all go to the highway trust fund. Um, general fund spending is largely, um, relegated to transit and some DVS functions. And that's only about $330 million a, um, a biennium. So to have a $115 million target for the biennium was really tough to reach, or excuse me, I had to be, yes, a $115 million target. Um, so obviously it was transit that bore the brunt of those costs in terms of the package that came together during the special session. Um, transportation had started to meet in public, um, during the regular session. Um, and the meetings were okay, they're making a little bit of progress. Um, then when it came time for that period between the general session and the special session, the working group was meeting behind closed doors and the discussions sort of devolved and they were getting at odds with each other crosswise, not, not going well. Um, so the bill ultimately got kicked up to legislative leadership to resolve. And I should say it wasn't the speaker or, um, or the, uh, majority leader in the Senate negotiating this. It ended up being, um, this, the Senate Finance Chair, John Marty, and the House Ways and Means Co-Chairs, Paul Torkelson and Zach Stevenson that ended up putting this bill together. I was with input from their transportation chairs, um, but it was largely, um, controlled by those folks. Um, so what they did to, um, then get to the budget targets besides the cuts to transit or because of the cuts to transit, um, there was a consensus by especially the Democrats that there needed to be some sacrifice for cuts from the roadside, from the highway side. Um, so, uh, in 2023, um, as part of the big transportation bill package that passed, uh, the sales tax on motor vehicle parts was dedicated to, uh, trunk highways as well as to a transportation advancement account. And that set up a schedule of, um, shifting over those motor vehicle sales tax revenues from the general fund to, um, the trunk highway fund. But with the, um, impending deficit the state is facing, um, the Senate had in their bill, and this prevailed in the final package, that, that transfer funds be slowed down. So instead of 43.5% going into the trunk highway fund, um, it was scaled back so that it's going to be 43% next year, then reduced to 41%, then, um, in fiscal year 28 to 36%. Fiscal year 29, 30%, and that's when the $6 billion state deficit is anticipated. And then after that biennium, it's going to phase back up to the 43.5%. So obviously this creates a hole in the trunk highway fund. Um, they were able to help offset that by institu, I shouldn't say instituting. They already have a surcharge on electric vehicles of $75. Um, they decided to increase that so it can be anywhere, um, I think up to $250 going forward. So that negates some of the losses to the trunk highway funds. But there still is going to be, um, a cut to when it comes down to the, the county level, to the CASA funding. In the next biennium, it's still a little bit of a, of a surplus of $3.8 million to CASA, or not a surplus, but an increase to CASA. Um, but in that 28, 29 years, it's going to be a $8.6 million cut to CASA overall. Um, but you know, it could have been worse if they didn't do anything with regard to, um, increasing the surcharge on electric vehicles.
Amber?
Yes.
The, what is that surcharge on electric vehicles? What was the estimate of that bringing in as far as?
Um, so that's going to bring in $23 million in 26, 27, and $53 million in 28, 29. And that will increase over time because it's tied, um, to the value of the vehicle, the MSRP.
Does that all go into CASA or not?
It's not just CASA, it goes into the trunk highway fund and then as it goes.
Goes into the truck highway, okay.
It's divvied up through the different formulas.
But strictly goes there, it isn't taking, some of it taken off and going into general?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, completely to the trunk highway fund, except for the cost to the DVS to administer. They get a little portion of it, but it's all going to, um, to the roads and bridges. Um, so that was good. Another bright spot, and I will, um, to Commissioner Coring's question, chalk this up as a win for MICA, um, was getting more money for the local government road wetland replacement program. That is a program administered by the Board of Water and Soil Resources where they administer a, a wetland credit bank. So if you have a county road, road reconstruction project, you don't have to come up with the cost of paying for those, the wetland mitigation yourself. You can go to this bank, um, to help you do that. And it also, um, expedites your permitting involved with doing a road reconstruction program. Um, I know last biennium, um, Steve Novak, who was your MICA transportation liaison at the time, um, had a bill introduced to sort of increase the funding for this program because it is an obligation of the state to provide this, but it's been woefully underfunded over the years. I think, you know, it's only received about a third of the funding it needs to operate the program well. Um, so when I came in, I heard a lot from the county engineers about how important this was, that we really need to increase the funding because the program was about to run out of credits altogether. So I sort of took the ball and ran with it. Obviously we worked with our other local government partners. Uh, but it was unprecedented to have money for this program in the transportation bill itself. That usually either comes from bonding and over the years, um, folks have tried to get some money through the environment committee, um, which there was some temporary funding at one point, but it's usually relied on bonding, um, which isn't great because this, especially with the deficit in credits, bonding dollars can't be used to buy credits on the private market to, um, help re, refill the credit bank. Um, the, um, bonding dollars can't be used to actually buy the rolling stock like the bulldozers and other things and machinery needed, um, to construct the wetlands. Um, so getting $3 million, um, in this program through the transportation budget bill and general fund money, I think was a big one. Um, it's too bad the House provision didn't prevail because going into a conference committee, they actually had $12 million in one-time funding and then ongoing funding for the Board of Water and Soil Resources in their budget to fund this program, which would have been huge. The agency was delighted, um, they were very supportive even though they couldn't be publicly because it wasn't one of the governor's recommendations, but they were thrilled, but, but that was a win there. Next slide. Um, I also have to say we were successful in stopping a lot of that, a lot of that policy pieces that were a part of this bill. Um, there was one proactive thing we were trying to change that we didn't get, um, on this list, but a lot of these things that were dropped from the bill were things we didn't like. Um, the one thing that we wanted to see happen was some changes, um, to, and to a new program that the state enacted last year with regard to, um, assessing and mitigating greenhouse gas emissions related to transportation projects. It, um, it was a program that was set up last biennium, um, but there wasn't any funding associated with it. They created accounts, but they didn't put any money in it. Um, and to do these offsets, the estimate by MINDOT is it could cost projects an additional 5 to 40%, which is extremely significant considering that inflation and other things are just eating up your transportation budgets. Fortunately, this program is only on state trunk highways now. We were, wanted, also wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be expanded to county or, um, municipal road programs. But there's still a lot of work to be done to figure out the mechanics of this program. So we were trying to work to at least delay, um, the start of it as well as provide some funding for it. Um, and we weren't successful on either front there, but we're definitely keeping tabs and we have some county engineers at the table, a task force that's working on it. Um, the things that weren't in the bill that we opposed, um, there was, uh, provision by, uh, the Senate Transportation Chair, Scott Dibble, to completely change, um, the, the state aid road standards. Um, right now there are, there's statute and rules that dictate the design of state aid roads. And then if you as a county want to do something different, there's a variance program where they have engineers and local officials at the table deciding if a variance should be granted. Unfortunately, the rules haven't been updated for a while, so that led Senator Dibble to think that the whole program needs to be blown up because he'd like to see a lot more, um, focus on other modes besides cars as part of these state aid standards. Um, and I don't think people are opposed to that, but this one-size-fits-all, um, that he was looking at doesn't really make sense for, um, you know, counties like Crowing and others. That was dropped from the bill. And there's also a Senate provision to expand what those trunk highway dollars can be spent on in terms of state projects. Um, so, you know, the prohibition, um, lim, through the constitution limits that states spending from the trunk highway fund to roads and bridges. Um, the Senate had a provision to allow permissible uses to include, um, active transportation and transit and greenhouse gas mitigation, again, which would have taken those very needed highway funds from roads and bridges and put them towards other uses. That was dropped. Um, there was also a couple of provisions in the Senate bill to have the legislature set speed limits on county roads, which has been a concern of the engineers over time. Um, they think it should be a local decision, um, that was dropped. And then there was also some language added in the Senate bill at the very last minute when they were putting that together that would have created a whole new program administered by MINDOT to, um, pay businesses for the disruptions to their business during, uh, road construction projects. And I think, um, everybody think, sympathetic to businesses who are faced with that. Um, but there was a concern because some of the ideas were that, you know, 1% of your project cost would automatically go into this fund to help pay businesses and who got paid and who would qualify was of a big concern. Um, and that was dropped from the bill. Uh, so I will take a pause there in terms of just the omnibus transportation bill and see if there's anything I didn't cover that you want to know about.
Any, any idea specifically our, you know, our little com- combination transit program with the city of Brainerd? Any idea if that, and if anything was affected with the dollars that we're receiving?
Yeah.
Specifically the Crowing County?
So I, I don't know the breakdown for Crowing County and I can find that out for you, but Greater Minnesota Transit, um, which receives general fund dollars, um, did receive a cut of $22 million for the upcoming biennium. I know there were some reserves in that account that they're thinking should not make it impact operations too much, but, um, you know, I, I can follow up with you and find out what kind of dollar loss that would be to Crowing because I'm not familiar with the distribution of the transit fund. I don't know if you.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm just curious if it's going to have an effect if we have to take a look at the fare box again. And I know our fare box is, I don't even know what we're at, $6 or something like that. So I just was wondering if that had an effect because we've had some people come forward that, you know, are pretty passionate about this. I've heard from people in Commissioner Lubkey's district recently, a couple of months ago, I suppose, yeah, so.
Yeah, and I know it could have been worse, um, because initially it was a, um, a higher amount that was going to be taken on an ongoing basis. So at least that it's limited to one biennium for now is helpful. All right. Something else there? No, if not, um, we have next slide, um, and talk a little bit about the bonding bill. Um, we weren't certain if there was going to be a bonding bill this session, you know, because you do need, uh, Republican and Democratic votes to pass since you need, um, a two-thirds vote, not just a, a simple majority to pass a bonding bill. Um, you know, there was a lot of discussion during the session. The capital investment committees met. Typically this isn't a bonding bill, but because one didn't get done last year, um, there's a lot of pent-up demand for projects. So they, they met, but neither the House or Senate actually put forward their own bonding bill during the regular session. Um, the Senate did have a spreadsheet, uh, Chair Pappas put together her wish list, um, but she had a pretty big target of $1.3 billion, um, which was very generous considering that the governor's budget recommendations and that of the Minnesota Management and Budget Office were only to do a, a bill of $700 million, just because that's what the, the debt service that could be handled. During the, um, prequel or sequel, whatever you want to call it, to regular session, the special session, um, the chairs met, um, continuously behind closed doors, but it didn't seem like there was going to be a bonding bill and we didn't get that certainty until the agreement around the special session was announced. Um, that was one of the things that was outlined that would be done during the special session. And that agreement had the support of, of Senate Minority Leader Mark Johnson, who agreed to put up the votes for a, a bonding bill. I should say he, in return for that, he really pushed to get more money of that $700 million for water and transportation infrastructure. I think he increased that amount by at least $100 million, which boded really well for us because there were some big things that local governments and MICA members care about. $42 million for the local road improvement program, um, $20 million for local bridges. And then again, we received even more money for the local government road wetland replacement program. Um, so all of these pots of money are very, um, important to, um, local governments and counties in particular because there are a lot of needs out there on the system that haven't been met, especially since this program didn't receive, uh, funding last year. Um, so that, that was great news for everyone and I would say this is far. Um, so that, that was great news for everyone and I would say this far exceeded what we were expecting. Initially, folks were talking about basing the, um, allocations on what they had thought about doing in 2024. And that bill, um, really only had, I think, 13 million for local bridges. None of these other, um, programs were part of that. So to get this bigger portion is, is great success for counties. And I will, yes.
I do have a follow-up question to Commissioner Coring's point about our local bus service. And you said there's a $22 million cut.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to hit the rural counties harder than the metro counties?
Well, the, so the, um, transit that's funded with general fund dollars through MnDOT is only for Greater Minnesota Transit. It's not for the metro area. Um, that being said, there were cuts to metro cha, transit of, I think it was $64 million over the upcoming biennium. But that being said, Metro Transit has a lot more sources of revenue than Greater Minnesota Transit. If you recall last biennium, there was a three-quarter percent sales tax increase in the metro area to fund largely Metro Transit, and that's upwards. I think that's going to generate about $900 million for Metro Transit, um, in the next biennium. So there is a disparity, um, just because Metro Transit has many more sources of revenue than Greater Minnesota Transit does.
Do you think they'll ever have the intestinal fortitude to stand up and say that they don't care about rural transit?
Um.
Because that's the message that's coming out.
Yeah.
We have people that are disabled. We have people that use that as a way to get to school, um, but they don't care. And it's all based on ridership and we don't have ridership.
Right.
Right, you don't have the density, you don't have, yeah, it's just much harder, so, yeah.
Commissioner Coring's point, if we're charging $6 a, a ride, how high can you go where the unfortunate can't afford to pay it?
Right.
And it just exacerbates the situation for those people.
No, I, I definitely agree. Um, and I think, you know, I was hoping there'd be more progress because I know there was a, there's a task force on aging and one of its top recommendations was to have more transportation options, especially for seniors in Greater Minnesota. So having other legislators besides, I think, just the transportation legislators talk about this is helpful, but I think, yeah, it needs to be elevated. And I'm glad to hear this from you because, um, as, this hasn't been an issue that was, came from the county engineers, obviously. So it wasn't a, you know, one of my focuses during the session, but definitely something I can, you know, we can focus more on with your feedback and input, so.
Okay, thank you.
Let's have Rachel just come up and talk about some of the environment. She's going to bounce up and back a couple of times, but, uh, she'll talk about some of the environmental bonding impacts, so.
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Rachel Sisnochek and I cover environment issues for MICA. Great to be with you all today. Uh, yes, I will be up here to give a more thorough overview of, uh, kind of where things landed for MICA's environment priorities this session, but did want to just quickly touch on a couple items that were included in the bonding bill, um, that were of note. So, uh, first is there was $6 million included for the capital assistance program or CAP. Um, this is going to be just kind of a, a pool of funds that the MPCA will get to decide how it's appropriated. In the past in bonding bills, CAP funding was often assigned to specific, uh, solid waste management facilities, projects. Um, but what we saw with the bonding bill this year is that there was no, no money, uh, dedicated to those specific local projects. They kept everything at a pretty, you know, statewide, more general level. Um, so it's a little bit of a different way that CAP funding will be, will be allocated, but, uh, there's still an opportunity for county projects to receive funding. And so that will be ultimately up to the MPCA to decide. Um, and, you know, in conversations with them just late last week, you know, they have, they're pretty agnostic to how the money, um, how CAP funds are, are appropriated. You know, they'll, they were happy to support the individual projects, um, when that was kind of the direction, um, that the bonding bills were going in past years. Um, but they were not really a part of the negotiations on the capital investment bill this year. And so this is kind of just how things landed. And so they'll, you know, they kind of have their list of priority projects. Um, that's likely where we might, you know, that isn't a public list at this point in time, but, uh, I think, you know, if that can be made available, that might give some direction to how those funds will be appropriated. Um, also through the MPCA, there is a new, uh, statewide drinking water contamination mitigation program. Um, so $6 million there. Um, counties are eligible to receive this funding, but, you know, again, it's, it's a new program. It was included in the governor's bonding proposal released earlier this year. Um, and so not a ton of clarity yet on kind of how they'll be making those decisions. So that's something that we'll be looking out for. Um, and then finally, while this is not, um, funding that will go to counties, I think it's still worth noting, just because of the significant dollar amount, is the 176 million to the Public Facilities Authority, um, for local water projects. So drinking water, storm water, um, there's an, an additional, you know, drinking water or water contamination and addressing contaminants in water is, is one of the priorities that, um, that we have for MICA for 2025. And so, um, there is an $18 million drinking water, uh, emerging contaminants program that is also funded as part of that 176 million. So I think we're seeing increased focus, um, at the state level. And this will come through in some of the other, um, updates I give, uh, on environment issues, uh, a focus on drinking water contamination. I think especially the conversation on PFAS, um, is, is very top of mind for legislators. And so I think, you know, to, to Amber's point earlier, um, for Senate Minority Leader Mark Johnson, who really pushed for more funding for, um, for water projects. Um, and I think a lot of those water projects, right, are in, in Greater Minnesota and places where, um, you know, local governments don't have the resources on their own to address these things. I think that's something that we'll continue to see in future sessions as well as more investments there, so.
Rachel, um, as far as with that PFAS, you know, we have a, a solid waste landfill that we, uh, do a very good job at, but we still have that PFAS issue.
Mm-hmm.
But you're talking about stuff that would be for the local cities more than, than that.
Yes.
So there's really nothing available for us to say, can we do a better job with our PFAS out at our landfill with anything you have right now, unless it came through a city?
Yeah, I, I, I would say no, not in the bonding bill. Um, you know, there, there is funding, um, you know, that could be a place where perhaps, um, CAP funding could be used, right? Is for, um, shoring up to prevent any, um, you know, contaminated leachate from spreading into, um.
Groundwater.
Into groundwater. Um, there is a ton of additional funding from the Clean Water Fund. Again, we'll get more into this, but a lot of funding through the Clean Water Fund. Um, you know, LCCMR funds, um, for, you know, groundwater protection, you know, mitigation of those contaminants, but, um, not so much in the bonding bill, at least not at, at a county level.
Okay, thank you. Could you update us on the SCORE grant?
Yes, would it be okay if we waited and then I can kind of just go, because that'll be part of the environment update? Would that be, I'm happy to do it now. I'm happy to wait and just kind of run through all of my stuff at the same time. I don't know if folks have a strong preference.
Okay, I'll wait.
Okay, we'll wait, but we'll get there, yes.
He's the board chair, he can say that.
Not used to waiting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions on bonding specifically before we turn it over? I think Nancy's up next.
So were you pretty shocked that there was, that they ended up with a bonding bill? Because it didn't really sound like that, I mean.
I'm, I'm very shocked, to be honest with you, that they ended up with a bonding bill. I, I mean, I think we've, uh, talked about this, uh, just amongst ourselves, but, uh, you know, there, a lot of the times when it's really difficult in a special session, one of the first things to fall off is a bonding bill because you need that three-fifths majority, right? Um, but I think the fact that they wanted to pass everything in one day and they needed to suspend the rules, so Senate GOP had a little bit of leverage there, right? And were able to get some changes to the bonding bill they liked. And once they saw a bonding bill they liked, they decided, oh, well, we'll put the votes up for this, right? Um, so I, but I do think that was a significant win this session, so.
So they did the right thing?
I, I mean, on bonding.
Yeah, I think so.
I, I'm not going to say that broadly, but I mean, on bonding, I, I, I mean, I do think that, uh, that was, that was significant.
It was really needed.
Yeah, really needed. And I mean, we're going to need another one, you know, but, uh, I, I think that that was a significant win of the session, yes.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
You'll be back, right?
Yeah. Okay, so we, I think we can go to the next slide here.
Oh, boy.
This is, yes.
Hi, everyone, Nancy Siliski, and I represent MICA in the area of Public Health and Human Services. Um, I will start at the beginning. Um, I would say that.
Yeah, there's two slides, sorry.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Um, so all county organizations had kind of the three, um, same priorities going forward this year. One was the replacement of SSIS. One was, uh, related to, um, Min Choices Reform. And the third one dealt with direct care and treatment, priority admissions to direct care and treatment. And I'm happy to say that all three of those progressed this year, which was, it was a good year, um, for those three things. Um, in terms of SSIS, it was funded at $35 million. Going into conference committee, the House position was $40 million, well, whereas the Senate was only $10 million. So we were thrilled to get that raised to 35 million. There also was money put aside last year of $10 million. So putting that together, we've got $45 million that we're going to be able to now draw, draw down, um, federal dollars. And hopefully, we are going to be saying goodbye to the green screen technology, um, hopefully soon. In terms of Min Choices, we had three priorities and all, all were included. For those folks that don't have a situation that, that's not going to change from year to year, these, uh, annual reassessments have been really, really difficult, um, for the client, not to mention your staff. And we've been pushing for quite a while for abbreviated reassessments for those, for that particular population. Um, they, uh, they are, um, able to ask for a full, uh, reassessment if they would like, but anyway.
Nancy, could you pull your mic a little closer? Uh, Paul, Paul can't, Paul can't hear you.
I don't project as well, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so every, you can do two reassessments, um, with a shortened, shortened, um, process, and then you have to follow that up with a third. So this will hopefully free up some, some, uh, county time here. There's also language that allows us to do remote assessments. Um, we, it, it used to be two in a row. We can now do four in a row and then it has to be followed up by a full reassessment. Verbal attestation can replace the, uh, required reassessment signature, signature for service initiation. However, within 30 days of the completion of the assessment, the assessor must email a request to get a written, written, um, attestation from the client. In addition to those, um, there were other folks that also were working on Min Choices, the hospitals being one. Um, they have, there's language in the bill. This is in the, by the way, the Senator Hoffman bill, um, with, uh, Representatives, uh, Mohammed Noor and, um, oh my gosh. Um, Representative.
Schumacher.
Thank you, Representative Joe Schumacher, oh my gosh. Um, it's in that bill. And the, the, um, language allows contracts, the hospitals to contract, um, for Min Choices assessments where counties might be backlogged. We still have to provide the oversight and compliance, um, for those contracts. They also modified the assessor qualifications. Um, it personally has to have a two-year degree now. And then counties do have to begin the assessment within 20 days of the request with an estimated timeline on, on when that full completion is expected to be done. So that was, um, also passed again as part of that Human Services Bill. The next one was the Priority Admissions, Direct Care and Treatment. Um, I just want to mention, shout out Tammy Luick was very much involved in this issue as well as others. Um, in the Human Services Policy Bill, there was language that provided an additional two-year pause on the 48-hour rule. And while that was a recommendation of the Priority Admissions Review Panel, that was coupled with the fact that we needed, um, we needed beds, we needed resources. So we, um, made that clear over and over again. In the end, the Human Services Bill again puts $10 million in '26 and $10 million in '28 to address bed capacity at AMRTC, the Miller Building. They also appropriated $34 million for the Miller Building, Building Operating Expenses in fiscal year '29. However, the need was about seven, it was $75 million for a 50-bed facility. So we were thrilled that the bonding bill did include that $55 million. So that was successful as well. Um, in addition, they did extend the Prior, Priority Admissions Review Panel. Uh, that, they have a report that's due to the legislature next February, February 1st of 2026. And then there's language that allows, uh, 10 civilly committed patients that are sitting in hospital settings to kind of move to the top of the list, um, for admit, being admitted to AMRTC. That goes until June 30th of 2027. Uh, DCT Executive Board has to publish a referrals and admissions dashboard on its website. They put $100,000 in, um, to develop a, a build-out plan for a locked psychiatric residential treatment facility within direct care and treatment. And what didn't happen, that we did work on, um, pretty hard, I think you remember that we had a two-year reprieve as it related to folks that have been committed as mentally ill and dangerous and are sitting in one state-operated bed waiting to go to another. Unfortunately, they did not continue that, that exemption. So that cost is going to shift back to us effective July 1st. It's estimated to be about $14 million in '26, '27, and $18.2 million in the tails. So those were the three priorities going into the session. Then, um, the governor's budget came out, everybody's budgets came out, and we were, um, surprised to see the dramatic number of county cost shifts. Um, we were on defense, um, in, in the defense mode ever, you know, since that happened. And I just can't think county commissioners, county staff that engaged your legislators because there, there isn't anybody that didn't hear about this, I can assure you of that. Um, so we were able to temper those, those cuts, I would say. I have a great chart, but I don't think we have it in the, in the presentation, do we? I don't think so.
Uh, no, but we can send it out.
Yeah, we can send it out. That, that reflects where we started, but I just want to mention some of the things that did not happen that were removed from discussion. The waiver rate exception, county cost share was removed. Um, there is a work group that's going to be charged with finding human services, uh, savings. They, um, are hoping that we're going to find $88 million. There are two, uh, MICA appointees as well as two AMC and two MACSA appointees on that group. So they're hoping that we're going to find some savings there. Um, the behavioral health cost share, that, uh, that was recommended by the governor to be increased from the current 22.95% to 50%. That did not happen. We remain at the 22.95%. There's no increase for the Minnesota Sex Offender Program Cost of Care. And there was language at one time that would have given us some responsibility for withdrawal management within the SUD system. That was not included either. So what didn't, was included was there's a $4 million shift in, in the first biennium and 8.5 in the second, where they're eliminating the county behavioral health cost allocation. I mentioned the MIND exemption going away. There's 16.760, um, for the two biennium, or, or, you know, ongoing for Chapter 611 competency attainment that we're going to be involved in. And finally, um, this was added at the end. We didn't know this was coming, although Senator Abler's been talking about it for a long time. Um, he wants to have Min Choices Assessments, um, capped at a flat fee. And so the department is, is, um, tasked with coming up with a methodology and coming back to the legislature next year. The savings from that, that they indicate are going to be generated is $18 million in '28, '29. So it looks like we will be moving away from that random time moment study process into a flat fee. Um, EMS ambulance issues, that's a large, big issue in the rural area. Um, they did put some money in, into that this year. There's $16 million for the ambulance operating deficit grant program, $2 million for service training and staffing, um, 8.5 in the first biennium, 2.1 in the second for the rural EMS uncompensated care pool. And this is coming out of the general fund. There's additional money for that uncompensated care pool that will come out of the Healthcare Access Fund of $5.4 million. And then they did put money, $400,000 into EMT education reimbursement grants. Public health, good and bad. Um, they put money into infectious disease prevention, 2.6 million per biennium. They also, I think you recall from last year, there was a reduction to the, uh, local and tribal public health grants for cannabis-related, um, prevention. They reduced that last year by $3.6 million per year. They partially funded that this year by, by appropriating $2.5 million a year. So we're not completely whole, but it's better than it was. There is, um, money for opioid antagonists on tribal campuses, a million dollars for a grant to change the outcome for opioid education. They also created a non-opioid directives, um, uh, healthcare directive that one can take to their, their, their physician's offices and have that on file. In terms of savings, they did reduce the funding, this is MDH savings, did reduce funding for emergency preparedness by $850,000 per biennium. And they reduced the, the, uh, public health infrastructure pilot projects by $4 million per biennium.
Go to the next slide.
Next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, and then they did pass a myriad of, a Department of Health, um, fees. So there's, there's a number of fees that will go up. Nathan brought up the tax proposed, or tax provisions related to cannabis, so I won't go through that again. I will hit. to cannabis, so I won't go through that again. I will hit a couple of things that did not happen this year. We were working on trying to change the Minnesota African-American Family Preservation Act by trying to get either a delay or allow the non-pilot counties of Hennepin and Ramsey to get the other eighty-five counties to have some sort of a phase in as well. At the end, we were told it's just premature. We have the statewide working group that's just getting underway, and that we should see what comes out of that work group before any changes would be considered. They report their initial findings in January of next year. I can tell you that it's a very slow process. They just started meeting. I think they've now had three meetings, and they've been very, very, not much progress yet. But I just want to mention the commissioners that are on that group. MICA members are Commissioner Kurt Mortensen from Otter Tail, Commissioner Carla Bigum from Washington, and then Commissioner Angela Conley's from Hennepin, and Commissioner Joan Lee from Polk County make up that group. The last couple of things, there was language floating around that would have prevented counties from contracting for case management services. In the end, that didn't pass, but I'm expecting that there'll be further discussions on that. And then in the Senate Judiciary Bill, Senator Lattz had a proposal for a civil commitment coordinating division, which would have been housed at the Attorney General's Office. That did not happen. There was a lot of discussion about that being duplicative. Work has already been done in so many other areas, and so that did not make it into the final. And then there was a proposal to increase the provider tax this year from one point eight percent to two percent, which is the max that can be charged. That was not increased either. It remains at one point eight percent. And with that, I just want to thank you and your staff. I mentioned Tammy Luwak, also Kara Terry, Kara Griffin, very much involved with MICA. And actually, they represent counties all over the state. And we just really appreciate their input. They're very valuable. I know you know that, but want to throw that out from our perspective.
Questions?
Nancy, I just, you know, as I sit here and listen to your presentation, I had a flashback to my years in the legislature. And I can see you sitting there. I was, of course, quite a bit lighter than, believe it or not. I mean, not color-wise, but weight-wise. But I had a flashback of Senator Burglin, because Senator Burglin, and I know you'll agree with this, Senator Burglin in the Senate, she was the Health and Human Services Committee. I can remember, I don't know if you were ever in there, when, I can't remember who it was, they offered up an amendment. She didn't want it in there. And I think everybody voted for it. She said, "Motion does not prevail."
Oh.
And nobody said a word. But it just goes to show you, you know, I spent eight years on that committee, and this stuff is so complex and complicated. It's so hard to understand it, to figure it out. And so I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
To help us try to understand what's going on, you know.
I was going to start my comments by saying, can I just give you my thirty-page report, which you're going to see shortly, because that's what it's going to be. That's what it's going to be. One thing I neglected to mention, and I'm still digging in a little bit, is non-emergency medical transportation. That has been an issue since I started with MICA at whatever point that was. And it started with a broker model. The broker ran that system. They changed it so that counties were gifted with it maybe, I don't know, six, seven, eight, nine years ago, something like that. Now they've come full circle, and it's going back to the broker model. So here we are, you know? You stick around long enough, it comes back.
It's funny, when I, you know, I got elected over twenty years ago, and it's still the same issues. Twenty years ago, you know, and now, it's the same issues. I can remember Commissioner Barrows was not Commissioner Barrows then, and a whole group of people came into my office. And I don't know if they were too happy about me getting elected, but they were in there. There was a lot of-
You were willing to listen.
Heavy breathing. I was listening, you know. They were even behind my chair. Anyway, we tried to do good work, anyway.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Nancy.
Sorry about Joe Schumacher. How could I forget?
Oh, good. Score grants. Rachel's back.
The anticipation is killing him.
All right, yeah. Hopefully, the wait was worth it. Okay, so again, I'm Rachel. I work for Gulf Public and lobby on environment issues for MICA. This is my second session working with MICA, although I did not do these visits last year. So this is my first time being in front of you all. So again, thanks for letting me be here. I thought it might be helpful, before we get to score grants, just to have a quick refresher on all of MICA's 2025 environment priorities. I think maybe unique to some of the other issue areas is that funding and policy changes related to these priorities covers many different committees. And so you'll see when we kind of get into the update on what all happened this year. There are a lot of different bills that we track and try to stay on top of and communicate with the chairs and committee members so that you all are informed about what's happening. And I think really, you know, the biggest buckets for our priorities really focus on solid waste and additional resources for counties to manage solid waste and try to manage it responsibly, and try to move it up that waste hierarchy. A lot of conversation, like I mentioned earlier this year and last year as well, in response to an EPA petition around groundwater contamination in southeast Minnesota, but really a statewide conversation around groundwater and drinking water contamination, and the need for resources to address that. And then Emerald Ash Borer and wood waste, trying to have more options and more resources available to productively manage wood waste. And so those are a lot of the things that you're going to be hearing more about in just a second. Can we go to the next slide, please? Sorry. I'm like looking at the slide. You're going to know to change it. So just an overview kind of of our progress and some of the limiting factors, things that made it a little bit more challenging. I think, as you've heard, right, across all of the committees, just the overall budget situation, we had, you know, very limited targets or cut targets for a lot of the committees. And so when we're trying to seek additional funding to help, especially when it comes to solid waste, you know, there isn't dedicated resources, the way that we have like the Clean Water Fund, for example, through the Legacy Committee, where you have that pool of funds that can be used to address issues in that area. You know, when it comes to solid waste, that doesn't exist in the same way. And so it makes it really challenging when you're trying to seek additional resources, and committee chairs are cutting funds. So I think that was really the biggest factor limiting some of our progress on our priorities. But of course, right, Legacy Bill with that Clean Water Fund, over three hundred million dollars in the next two years for a lot of different projects that really align with our priorities. And then I earlier talked a little bit about the bonding bill. And that's, you know, never a guarantee that there will be a bonding bill. But even in a situation where, you know, we're cutting general fund spending, having that bonding bill does open up some additional resources for our priorities. We talked already a little bit about the reduction in aquatic invasive species county aid. Commissioner Lebkey, I know we had a chance to talk about that at the MICA Forum back in January, you know, when we headed into the governor's fishing opener that was hosted here just, what, I guess, a couple months ago, a month ago? It's- Time is all. Yes. I'm muddled, but, you know, we felt like we were in a better place. But then, as conversations continued, obviously, you know, very disappointing, I think, for Crow Wing County especially, to see that fifty percent reduction. So just wanted to acknowledge that again. We spent a lot of our time this session talking about product stewardship. Again, you know, just given that there weren't a ton of additional resources, I think one of the ways, one of the options available to counties to help lower their costs to manage solid waste is through product stewardship. So last year, we had the Packaging Waste and Cost Reduction Act, which passed, which includes all paper products and all packaging, really involving kind of industry and the companies that are producing all of that product, that, you know, all goes to waste eventually, and kind of helping manage the cost and process for dealing with that waste that they're creating. There was, you know, just given the kind of the political dynamic and the tied Minnesota House and the one state Senate, DFL majority, there was a lot of interest from industry, even though I think the bill that we passed last year got to a place where a lot of industry groups could accept it. They maybe weren't thrilled, but they could deal with it. You know, with an opening, I think there was a lot of interest, a lot of outside push, pushing from industry groups to try to have a conversation about, you know, exempting more products, rolling that back a little bit. That's just being implemented like at the start of this year. So we're in the very early stages. And so there was legislation that was introduced that would exempt all paper products and would make other significant changes. It was sponsored by a Senate DFL member, and so there were a lot of concerns there. And so that was a place where we really activated our members. And especially just knowing that MICA counties have some of those more moderate Democrats, who are maybe the ones who are kind of more open to having a conversation about making changes to that packaging bill. I think that's a place where we are uniquely situated to present our perspective and really share, you know, why is this important to counties? Counties are very trusted advocates on solid waste issues. I was in a number of committees where, you know, if counties were sharing an opinion, whether it was, you know, at the testifier table or in written testimony, that's something that members of that committee noticed and would elevate in their debate and discussion on solid waste issues. So I think we're very well prepared to continue with that advocacy in future years. And so ultimately, there was no, you know, there were no real public debate on the packaging bill. There were no amendments. We were, you know, there are a couple kind of key moments that we were prepared for, amendments to be offered on the Environment Omnibus Bill to roll that back. And so we did a good job in shoring up support and being able to keep that as is. But I think because last year we passed this really landmark legislation around kind of product stewardship, it made it really hard when we were trying to have a conversation this year about an additional product stewardship program around electronic waste and batteries. And, you know, I'm sure that you all know and hear from, you know, folks here in the county about the risks that electronic waste and batteries pose to the folks who work in that space, you know, landfill fires, all sorts of issues. And so, again, trying to set up a similar model where some of industry folks are more involved in how those items are managed. But that, you know, I think there was a lot of hesitancy, you know, wanting to see, like, let's get this one program implemented first around packaging before we start to expand. And so that ultimately, you know, that was another place where we really advocated, but it was not included in the final environment bill. Data centers were, you know, I think if you had asked folks a year ago, who cares about data centers? I don't know that anyone would have expected that it would have been such a hot-button issue this session. But, you know, I'll get to it in the next slide. But there were some concerns, I think, connected to our priorities around water usage and just protecting water supplies in local communities. And so that ended up being a part of the standalone data centers bill that passed. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then finally, lots of conversation around Emerald Ash Borer and how we deal with wood waste, I think, especially in the Energy Committee, but not a lot of action. And again, I think that's mostly based on just the limited resources and funding available in the relevant committees to help deal with that. So people know it's a problem, but they're not necessarily putting the money towards it. So that is disappointing. And you can go to the next. So we talked a little bit about Legacy Bill. If folks have questions about any of the specific funding items that were included from the Clean Water Fund, I'm happy to address them. But it was the Clean Water Council makes recommendations for how to spend the Clean Water Fund dollars, and the Legacy Bill just adopted those wholesale. So no major changes. We have a couple MICA commissioners that are on the Clean Water Council and help put those recommendations together. And so I think we're in a good place with that funding. Environment Bill, I did cover a lot of this already, but I do kind of these last three bullet points. There were increases to watercraft surcharges to help support aquatic invasive species management. And that is money that is going to go to the MPCA. So that's like addressing this at a statewide level. When we were talking about this with the MICA board just last week, you know, there was, you know, the reason that the AIS county aid was implemented in the first place, which I believe was about a decade ago, is because the state wasn't necessarily doing a great job. And so there was a desire for more resources at the local level to help with this issue. And so I think that's a place where, now that the state is going to see more money. And so with those increased watercraft surcharges, it's going to be an additional five million per biennium going to AIS management activities at the state level. I think that's a place where we can try to push the state a little bit more in how they're spending that increase, and make sure that that impact is being felt at the local level. And then there was also an increase in water use permit and water appropriation permit application fees, and that will go towards groundwater management activities. And that'll be an additional four point three five million next biennium, and then a five point three million per biennium starting in fiscal year 2028. So as those additional fees go online, it'll be a ramp up, and we'll see more money. And then lastly, there was an increase in appropriation coming from the Closed Landfill Investment Fund, or CLIF, that was set at four point five million and was set to sunset this summer. So they needed to extend that statute, which they did through the end of the 2029 fiscal year, and then also increase the amount of money that can be taken from that fund to six point five million, which was, this was similar to a request that MPCA had made as part of the governor's budget proposal that we saw released earlier this year. They were also hoping for additional flexibility to be able to take even more money out of that fund if the need were to arise, but that was not ultimately included. And then the next slide, is this where we have SCORE? Okay, so we are finally to the SCORE update. Unfortunately, it is not a super great update. So Nathan already talked about the Tax Committee, and that's where the conversation around increasing county SCORE grants really plays out, trying to get the remainder of the solid waste management tax revenue put towards counties to help support their recycling and waste management activities, which is about, you know, thirty-two, thirty-three million dollars a year that we argue, and did argue, in front of both the House and Senate Tax Committees when our bill was heard this year. You know, that was the intended purpose of the solid waste management tax, and so we should be changing how that's allocated. But again, when they're trying to cut, you know, a hundred eighty, a hundred ninety million dollars, there's not thirty-three million extra dollars that they can take, you know, from other issues and put towards SCORE. And so that was, I think, our biggest barrier. We had the maximum number of House authors on our House SCORE Bill, which I believe is thirty-five, members of both parties, every member of the Tax Committee, most members of the Environment Committee. And so really strong bipartisan support. Again, we had really great hearings in both the House and Senate Tax Committees, but the money just isn't there. I don't know if you want to say anything else, but I was just going to say, you know, the initial House tax proposal did have a little bit of one-time money for SCORE in fiscal year 2026, around three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand, and then a little bit more in fiscal year 2028, a little over a million. So not, you know, again, not nearly enough to really meet the need. But I think symbolic of, you know, from those chairs at least, that they know that this is important. So I think the conversation around SCORE will absolutely continue. Again, at the MICA Board meeting just last week, a commissioner brought up that we're quickly approaching 2030, where counties have to meet these state-mandated recycling goals. And yet, the state is not doing their share, I would say. And there are a lot of opportunities for the state to do a better job of investing in counties' ability to actually meet those goals. So that will absolutely be an issue we continue to talk about, and, you know, as part of SCORE and the Tax Committee and in other places as well.
Rachel, one thing, excuse me, you go first.
The only thing I was going to add is that, you know, Rachel talked about that small position we had in SCORE in the House Tax Bill. It was just really tough to get any kind of money in the tax bill this year, even beyond just the cut target. The initial tax bill was just twelve pages, and that was just basically, here's the things we need to get to our budget. We're not going to do anything else. They ended up putting in some other provisions, and it up at a hundred and twenty-three pages, I believe. But like, that a hundred and ten pages that they added, the total cost of all those provisions was less than a third of just that one SCORE provision, super small SCORE provision on its own. So it just kind of gives you an idea, the sense of how difficult it was to get any money in the tax bill this year. So that's all I wanted to add.
You know, I know in Crow Wing County, you do a really good job with our recycling, with the amount of recycling we ship. But it costs us a lot of money to get the recycling- But it costs us a lot of money to get the recycling out of here. And, you know, you look at other states and like this bottle here, it shows, you know, deposits on this bottle. You know, that would be one way of funding it because you talk about the packager who's looking at as a cost of his business to be able to do that. You know, that's, but I don't know if this will ever happen in the state of Minnesota, I'd be honest with you. But that would really, really help to take care of that. The other one you talked about was, if you go back to slide thirteen, if you don't mind, uh, just a second there. That battery, that battery thing, I don't think we realize how important that is, especially in our landfills, especially in the landfills that we have. Because our, our, ours are lined pits with layers. And so all of a sudden, if we end up with an, with a battery somewhere in a layer that we've already put down, it is a major, major cost for us to get that out of there. So I, I think that e-waste with batteries, especially with the, with the battery situation would, would, is really important for us. As far as the, um, the waters, the watercraft services for the AIS, i- as long as we can get a hold of that money to help us with the AIS, because it is all about clean water, you know. If you look at the, uh, MICA counties, and I've looked at pretty much a lot of them, um, we are some of the lake center counties in Minnesota. And so it's very important. And I'm really glad you're in that position because I think you're a great advocate for us in MICA County. So I really appreciate that. But it's something that we really have to watch about because we're all about clean water. I also serve on the AMC's Environmental Natural Resource Committee, and I'm also on their, uh, solid waste work group, which is working with a lot of other counties that are out here that haven't maybe stepped up to the plate as much as Crow Wing has. But there, but even though we're, we're, I think, in the lead in a lot of areas in our county, there is so much more that's coming that we have to be prepared for. So I think it's really important that we, we stay with that and keep with it. And thank MICA for, you have a pretty strong arm in that area, and thank you for being there. So.
Absolutely. And I think, um, you know, I, I should also mention that one of the co-chairs of the House Environment Committee, Josh Higginson, is from Nisswa, so in, in the county. And he, I think Nathan, you were part of that kind of initial meeting, you know, met with him at the beginning of session to talk through all of our environment priorities. And he clearly does hear from, from you all, from the county about solid waste issues in particular. He also spoke very fondly of MARF, I believe, from the, the Crow Wing County landfill.
He's a hero up here, you know.
Who also does a really good job. And right, like, I think, you know, it is our job to be there to, to advocate on behalf of, of you all and on all MICA counties on these issues. But I think it's when they're hearing from you all directly or from those subject matter experts, that things are really solidified for them and they really understand the importance of, of the work that you do and, and why these issues, um, are so impactful to counties. So thank you all for doing it. I think the only other, again, I mentioned data centers, and I don't know that we need to go into the details unless folks are super interested, but did just want to say that there are some safeguards, um, just around, you know, scoping projects and where, um, you know, what the water needs are going to be. Water is often used to cool the data, the different thing, the structures. I don't know. I'm not a data centers expert, but, um, water is a big part of it. And there was a lot of concern from environmental advocates around, um, just the immense water usage required for a lot of these projects. And so, um, just as part of kind of the pre-application and permit process, there are different considerations that, um, you know, industry coming in who want to cite these projects that they need to take into account and include in those applications. So there wasn't an official MICA position on, on data centers, but it came up a lot in conversation, again, at the Capitol and, and different, um, in the environment committee. And so just wanted to update on that.
Yeah. And one of the, you know, two components for the data center is, is large amounts of reliable power and water. You know, so if we have a lot of water but don't have large amounts of, of reliable power, that's going to be a challenge. And, and that will be a continuing challenge for, for that whole, or industry as it more solvent to see what it's actually going to be because it's, it's, it can be massive, the amounts of energy they use. So.
Very good.
Any other questions? Thanks everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rachel.
We can go to the next one. Okay. I'm going to go over corrections and public safety kind of quickly because I'm not the lead on corrections and public safety. But Amelia wasn't able to join us today, and I'll just try to, um, kind of summarize this as best I can. The global targets here, these are not cut targets, um, unlike a lot of these other targets, these, these are increases. But seventy-five percent were for agency operations and deficiency requests. There's a little money available elsewhere. The supervision funding formula incorporated three-year average of probation case load data. So the idea is there that that's just going to be a more stable, uh, formula moving forward. Supervision fees were extended by two years to August first, 2029. On sentencing to serve, the program sunsets July twenty, uh, July first, 2025. Counties can still continue the program, but the state's not going to share costs. They realize about one point eight million dollars of savings per year with that. Uh, the Minnesota Rehabilitation and Reinvestment Act, the Commissioner of Corrections is authorized to revoke. Earned incentive release credit if an incarcerated individual violates facility rules or commits a criminal act while in custody. And then the Stillwater Facility is going to be fully decommissioned in 2029. DOC anticipates enough capacity, uh, for all individuals to be moved to other facilities with no increase to those on supervision. So unless there's questions there, I'll move to the next one. I did want to talk about some of these kind of labor and general government issues. So Earn Sick and Safe Time, this is a program that went into effect in 2024. We were advocating for a few things here, um, and notably just trying to make sure that, uh, more generous leave policies like acting coordination rather than just everything stack on top of one another with the, the state program. What ended up changing was really limited, though it did get added kind of at the last minute. The notice requirements were changed from, for using E S S T from as soon as practicable, which is kind of vague, to as soon as reasonably required by the employer, which is also vague, but maybe a little bit more favorable from, uh, the local government employer perspective. So that's just, uh, um, one piece of it. The other smaller, again, this is another minor policy change there in sick and safe time, but prior to this year, if you were going to use more than three days of E S S T, you needed to provide some type of documentation. This year that was changed to more than two days of documentation. On paid leave, uh, we were also pursuing changes relating to making sure benefits don't stack on top of one another. And trying to make sure that, uh, there's an assumed fifty fifty split between employers and employees when it comes to paying that premium. That's the way these programs are treated pretty much everywhere. And trying to exempt elected officials from the, the premium because they're, they're already essentially qualified for it. I would say that, uh, so none of those changes, uh, happened. The one thing that did happen on paid leave was reducing the premium rate cap from one point two percent to one point one percent. Currently, the rate is point eight eight percent, so it won't be able to go above one point one in any scenario. That's where state law is going to cap it. It did already increase from point seven seven to point eight eight. But realistically, going, reducing the cap isn't going to have any savings to you and your budget next year because you're assuming the point eight eight. That wasn't, reducing the premium rate cap, it's kind of like, okay, that's nice, that's fine. It wasn't a change that we were pursuing. I would say that was really difficult to lobby on these issues just because there were other changes, uh, other organizations, including like business groups, were pursuing related to paid leave and E S S T. And we were aligned with them on some, and we weren't opposed to any of their changes. But their changes were perceived as very controversial, controversial by DFL lawmakers who said, I think, both at the leadership level especially, and a lot of members had said, we don't want to take away any benefits from anyone. So it was really difficult to kind of separate this out because even when we were meeting with DFL lawmakers, they said, hey, you know, these changes seem relatively okay, but I just don't want those things. And it was tough to make one travel without the other. Just another thing, on absentee ballot drop-off deadlines on election day. In 2023, the legislature changed the deadline from three P M. to eight P M. There are just a number of counties where this became kind of an issue as far as like counting your ballots, reporting your ballots. And then, okay, there's some counties where it's like, they might've showed fourteen out of fourteen precincts repeating, uh, reporting. But then, uh, these additional absentee ballots come in afterwards. So it looked like you had a hundred percent ballots counted, but you didn't yet because of these absentee ballots. So we were pursuing a change, uh, to move that deadline up. The Senate had a position of three P M., the House had a position of five P M. The Secretary of State was, uh, pretty strongly opposed to this change, it turned out. But we did get that five P M. to move from eight P M. to five P M. for that deadline. Open law, uh, open meeting law notifications, uh, changed. Uh, so this is just, it allows remote participation from a location that's not open and accessible to the public. Current law, that's limited to three times a year, and there has to be a medical or military reason for you, uh, to be using that, uh, ability. And then I already talked about the capital replacement account earlier. So we can go to the next one. Out of this pensions bill was signed into law, a pretty significant one. Pensions also had a positive target. So they were able to use that money in increasing pensions, uh, for, uh, a lot of that, uh, essentially police, fire and teachers. And, and the COLAs in particular. One significant change was, uh, on the duty disability provision. So under current law, the state is picking up the tab essentially for, uh, they, they created a one-time pot of money in 2023 to pay for, uh, these duty disability, uh, health insurance benefits. But that's going to, that money's going to run out, uh, and then it'll be back to the local units of government to pay for this. So the legislature changed the law so that rather than having this health insurance run through age sixty-five, if you claim a duty disability, you're limited to five years tops. It only affects people moving forward. So if you're already in that program, there's, there's no changes. The, so it's, it's only prospective, not retroactive. There were also changes to, um, the Para General Pension Plan. The essentially, uh, that, that plan is healthy enough that the plan can absorb those costs. So there wasn't a general fund, uh, increase, uh, or a cost to that. There is something in law that basically says employers have to pay a higher percentage than employees until the plan's a hundred percent funded to make sure that that higher employer rate, which was scheduled to turn off in 2034, stays turned off in 2034. They just lowered the threshold for, instead of saying a hundred percent funded, it's ninety-eight percent funded. And, uh, they also created a working group for, uh, kind of looking at what about a different differential pension plan for nine one one telecommunications or probation officers? There was a big discussion at the Capitol this year on those pension plans. There wasn't a separate plan created, but they did create a working group. MICA does have an appointee from that, to that working group. I think he'll be, uh, Director of Court Administrative Services from Wright County. There's also two appointees from AMC to that group. They're supposed to report to the legislature with recommendations by January on this and try to figure out, does it make sense? One of the, um, changes we got into the working group is just making sure that the working group consider trying to make sure that the employer and employee, uh, contribution rates are similar. So it's not a requirement, but they're required to consider that because that's where, uh, a lot of these pension benefits work in the first place. So any questions on those general government or pension issues? Okay, we can go to the next one. So just kind of wrapping up here, want to talk a little bit about what's next, um, from a MICA perspective. So we're going to start our policy process. So in August, our, uh, board made up of county commissioners. We're going to kind of hear from them on like, what, what are the big issues you're hearing about? What should MICA be considering in 2026? And then that direction is going to be given to policy committees. Policy committees are made up of professional county staff, and they're going to hear from experts. Maybe it's a chair, or maybe it's, uh, somebody from the executive branch and to dive more deeply into these issues, kind of exchange ideas. What are you hearing from your county? What are we hearing from my county? What are the issues? Where is there agreement, uh, between us? And try to move those ideas forward. So those, those committees, uh, draft, uh, our policy document essentially. And then the county administrators review that. And the board also has two steps of review along the way too. To see is like, okay, well, this is nice. Is this good? But are, are there anything that we think should be added to the conversation? Is there something that slipped by? And then the board is the, the group that finally, uh, decides to vote on whether or not those recommendations end up in our, uh, policy book. And that policy book is really important because it's kind of like our guidepost for the whole session. Now, we can be responsive and reactive, and if we hear from counties that there's issues that we don't have a position on, we can, we can lobby on those issues. Don't get me wrong, and we do frequently. But it is just kind of really helpful for us to identify like, okay, what are the biggest priorities? Because the biggest priorities from the outset of session are going to be in that policy book. So that's, they're just kind of our big guidelines and, and kind of what we aim for when it comes to the session. So that policy process, uh, lasts from August to January essentially. You can go to the next slide, which I think is the last one. So, um, this is just our information, contact information. We just want to make sure whether it's email or cell phone that you have it. Please, if you ever have questions, concerns, or you want to know about what's going on in one issue area, if I don't know the answer, I can quickly talk to somebody that does. Don't just, uh, and we're really a resource, want to be a resource for you. Don't hesitate to reach out. And just happy to take any questions, um, if you have them.
Questions?
You got one. I do. Can you back up to the, uh, slide about the, um, duty disability?
Yeah, that one. Yep.
So is that, that's law enforcement, I'm assuming we're talking about?
Yeah, so.
So if there, if someone's injured on duty from this point forward, they're, um, they're only going to have a disability coverage for five years, and then they're on their own?
Well, uh, so there's, there's a few things going on here. The, the, the idea of duty disability is that they eventually re-enter, right? And when the legislature created this five-year window, it was essentially in recognition of the fact that, um, it gives them time to figure out, is this the process that makes the most sense moving forward? So that's why it's, they kind of gave themselves a window to continue working on this because there's not going to be any impact for the next five years. And it's something that if you talk to the, uh, members of the pension commission, that it's, uh, it's something that they plan to continue working on. It was kind of, this bill did pass very quickly, I would say, on a bipartisan basis. I think there was one no vote in the House. But it did pass very quickly, the last couple of days of regular session. But yeah, that, that is a change from the health insurance through age sixty-five guaranteed to the sixty months. And I, I guess I should just add that the reason that came about was because there were concerns about the health of the pension plan, the police and fire plans, the worst, in the worst fiscal shape of any of the plans. It's a little bit less than ninety percent covered. And so the idea was, we want to make sure that this pension plan is in as good a shape as possible so that it doesn't require a significant investment of general fund dollars down the line, and we're not sure if we're going to have them or not.
So let me ask you a question, follow up on that. Is that a hard five years or is there an opportunity to go back and have it reconsidered for a longer period, depending on what the injury was or?
Well, I, I want to be really clear that like total, like, uh, total disabilities or permanent disabilities are still covered through sixty-five. This is just the, the duty disability. I, I can follow up and get you more detail on like revisiting. I do know that as, also as part of this change, employers are no longer allowed to contest, uh, paras, if, if para rules, this is a duty disability. Under prior law, employers were allowed to contest those rulings. They're no longer allowed to contest those rulings. It's just another component of that change.
Could you explain duty disability? I don't, uh, maybe you could do that to me. No.
I mean, it's, it's a disa, there's both physical and mental.
Would be the PTSD. Is that the, is that where we're talking about?
It's essentially what we're talking about.
Okay, okay. Then you can say that.
Yep. Sorry, I.
I didn't know if that's what duty disability meant.
Yeah.
I guess I brought up another question. You know, after the George Floyd, uh, thing that happened down in the cities, there was a lot of Minneapolis police officers that were going out. Is, is this maybe because of that or is it, or not really?
I, I would say that, uh, you know, I, I don't want to speak for other local units of government, right? But I do think that Minneapolis and Hennepin County were especially interested in this issue because we saw, uh, a spike in, in duty disability claims following, yeah, twenty twenty. I guess the one thing that sometimes people do ask questions about is like, well, are they going to come back for special session, you know? And I have a very unsatisfying answer to that, which is, uh, I don't know. Nobody really knows. Uh, the, federally, the Senate did just yesterday, release language of their one big bill. The House passed their bill in Congress earlier. I don't have a lot of details on that. They don't even have spreadsheets yet of the Senate position. But one thing that I do tell. But one thing that I do tell counties, which is good news, which is that there's not any repeal or reduction in the municipal bond interest exemption, which, in either the House or Senate bill, which would have just made it a lot more expensive to build infrastructure at, at the local level, so.
Just, just to let you know, it's one big beautiful bill.
One big beautiful bill is, is the technical term, yeah.
That nobody who voted on it read the whole thing, so.
Uh-oh. Any other questions?
But that's all I have, though, so.
No other questions? Very good. Thank you very much to you and to your team. Appreciate you coming up very much. Nancy, thank you for coming up here and living in Crow Wing County for a couple days, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Sheriff, could we get an update on the storm, perhaps?
Oh. Yeah, we were, we were up until about, I don't know, about quarter to 10, we had our, we had our command van or setup. There was a lot of, lot of trees down, a lot of damage. There was like, started out with like 2,000 people without power, then it went to 1,800, then by 10, it was around 900 people that were still without power. They're just firing up the, the substation, trying to re-energize that slowly, I guess. There was a, there was a couple roofs that were off, of some sheds, there were, there was a tree that went through a roof, and that was really about it. Otherwise, it was just a lot of backbreak and work on, on all the, the tree cleanup that it's going to take.
No injuries or anything?
No injuries, nobody got hurt from even the cleanup at this point that we know of, so we got FEMA out today, and we're going to look at doing, doing a complete assessment of all the damage. So, and I, I got a chance to see that tornado, that's the first one I've been that close to, and it was, it was, it was interesting, to say the least, so. But it was good, it was, it was really good. We sure appreciate the public, they stopped by, brought us some treats and some water in our command center that we had set up at the Merrifield Lions Park. That was super nice of them, I sure appreciate our, our people, so.
So all the roads are passable now?
They are, they're, they're all opened at this point, so.
Thanks to all the highway workers who were called out last night to start working on clearing those roads, they had an assist from some of the local fire departments as well. The sheriff and his team were out all evening getting all of those things done. Our parks workers have checked out all of our county parks, and they are all open this morning. There was some damage at the Fire Tower Park for as far as trees and debris cleanup that will need to happen. We will be putting out some press information today to remind folks of how they can dispose of that storm debris and how that can be handled, as well as to be cautious when approached by folks to help with storm cleanup.
There was a lot of those guys out yesterday.
So just, we'll have some public information out for folks, and our public health team was on call and standby last night to assist if those folks without power, if that would have persisted into longer times as well, so.
Yeah, I, I just want to thank the Nisswa Fire Department, they were phenomenal. They came out, they were out right away, and they opened up one lane of the, of the road on every one of the roads that were impassable, and did a, I mean, a quick and fast job with that. And our, of course, our county highway folks came out right away, they were out Johnny on the spot, too. That was the quickest storm cleanup I've seen in a long time, that thing was fast.
Darcy, our PIO had mentioned that she had just posted the note letting folks know to avoid County Road 127 because all lanes were closed, and about as soon as she got it posted, it was, one lane is open, and about as soon as she got that posted, it was, it's wide open again now. So lots of communication going on between all the folks, and cleanup happening super swift.
And Renee, the county board was up here working hard, and we went down to the basement, too, for a little while. Sirens.
Part of equalization yesterday, they got to even spend some time in the basement during the sirens. Very happy to hear you all followed emergency protocols.
Well, not everybody did.
The DNR is going to have some work on the Paul Bunyan Trail, that, that was still impassable over by Molly Lake Road and sort, so they'll have that work to do today, so.
I would think that would be a number one priority.
Well, yes, yes, health and wellness is very, very on the front burner here, so.
All right, well, great job.
Thank you.
I had a chance to go up there last night after the meeting and, and observe, and they, they were a well-oiled machine, everybody up there was working very well together, you guys did a great job, so.
I think if you go back to 2015, moving forward, we've had a lot of practice.
Oh, we did before 15.
In summer or winter, we've had a lot of practice.
Yeah, this is like tornado alley, holy cow.
Yep, well, thank you very much. We are, we are adjourned, so general conversation is in place.